Welcome, everyone. I, Council President Hunt, call the March 8th Special Counsel Study Session to order. Before we move on to tonight's agenda, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. On March 6th, 2020, the mayor issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24th, 2020, the governor issued proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings. This proclamation has been extended until termination of the state emergency or until repealed by the governor or legislature. Due to these proclamations, tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. A meeting link and call-in number were provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to attend the meeting. The meeting will also be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. There are multiple public comments opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the staff presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda items. And I will also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed regarding tonight's agenda items. And then, just a quick reminder to council members to please indicate in the chat when you would like to speak. I will now take a roll call of the council members in attendance, so please say here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Thanks. Councilmember Marts?
Here.
Council Deputy President Ray?
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thanks, everyone. And the first item on the agenda is public comments. This is the general public comment period. If there's anyone on the call now who would like to make public comments and did not sign up to speak, please raise your virtual hands. And this is, if you are on the phone, press star three, and if you have joined by computer, look for a hand icon. And city clerk, is anybody on the line wishing to make comments?
Thank you. We have no one who has signed up in advance to speak, but we do have two attendees who are on the line, and they have not raised their hand.
Okay. Well, I will just read the rest about raising their hand, just in case they need to raise their hand. So if you've joined by computer or smartphone, please look for a hand icon. This varies by device. When option may be to go to the participant panel and select your name, and then choose raise hand. And I'll just wait a minute in case anybody does want to raise their hand and indicate that they would like to speak. All right. So I'll do one more quick check. City clerk, did anybody indicate a desire to speak?
I think you're holding. I do not see a virtual hand raised, but Corby Kessler, I will turn you to a panelist, and if you have comments, I will check with our council president to see when they would start the clock on that one. Hi, Corby.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can. Did you wish to address the council?
I would. I just want to say, first of all, thank you for having me. I always love seeing you guys. I'm especially loving this WebEx, so I get to see your faces. I'm excited about the topic you're going to be discussing today. I know that it's, you got, your heart is in with the 501(c)(3)'s, and I'm excited about that. And Dia has, as you know, suffered COVID-related difficulties, given the fact that we couldn't do onsite events where we sold tickets and raised funds that way. So just wanted to raise my hand, say that we're happy that you're having this conversation, and that Dia is definitely in need of any funding you could possibly provide. As you know, we provide quite a bit of value to downtown Issaquah. It's our heart and soul, and we work very closely with you, so I probably am not telling you anything you don't already know, but thank you for listening.
Thank you, Corby. Is anybody else indicating a desire to speak this evening?
There is not. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. And as a reminder, you can also send us email on any item at citycouncil@issaquahwad.com. All right. I think with that, we will move to the first item, which is ID 0855 Nonprofit Relief Grant Funding. And I believe this is being presented by City Administrator Bob Quitz.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the council, good evening. A few weeks ago, the council, in reviewing Mayor Polly's suggestions for additional investments in the community as part of our COVID-19 recovery plan, there was interest among the council to talk about funding for nonprofits in the community. So we were going to come back on the 15th of March with that, but since the initial meeting, several members of the council asked that we have a study session, and the council leadership and the mayor agreed to schedule tonight's meeting. What the administration has done is put together a proposal, and I'll ask Clerk Eggers if she wouldn't mind sharing her screen, so we could put that proposal up on the screen, and I'll walk through that. As the council knows, we have provided assistance to other nonprofit organizations really geared toward service delivery. Earlier in the pandemic, we've also made several grants cycles for for-profit businesses. So what the council asked us to do was to look at what we could do for nonprofit organizations. And the administration looked at other communities, what other communities have done around the country, and we found many programs assisting 501(c)(3) organizations. 501(c)(3)'s are, you know, the largest number of nonprofit organizations. 501(c)(3) is an Internal Revenue Code, and so when a 501(c)(3) is mentioned, these are general nonprofit organizations. Donations to these organizations are tax deductible. Many, many organizations, not only in Issaquah but around the country, are 501(c)(3)'s. There are additional nonprofit organizations that are identified by the Internal Revenue Service. Those have different numeral designations. Some here in Issaquah, for example, are 501(c)(4) and 501(c)(6) organizations. These types of nonprofits have more specific missions. Many of them are business or economic development related, and they are also nonprofits. Generally speaking, donations to those groups are not tax deductible for members of the community watching this, at least from my view, is an easy way to tell apart a 501(c)(3) from other 501(c) organizations. The administration this evening is not proposing to provide any assistance for other than 501(c)(3) organizations. That's for a couple of different reasons. First, as we looked at what other communities were doing around the country, almost unanimously focused on the 501(c)(3)'s, I think other communities decided to do this, and I think we share, the administration shares, the thought that these are the organizations usually with the least resources, the least access to any kind of, any kind of sustainable funding. And so this evening, we are only focused on those organizations that are 501(c)(3). This proposal that you have before you this evening would allocate $100,000 to 501(c)(3) organizations, and much of this program has some resemblance to what we are proposing for our businesses. So when you look at the second portion of this on the screen, grant amounts, we're proposing that there'd be 11 grants of $5,000, six grants of $7,500 geared toward different-sized organizations. 501(c)(3)'s, again, are very in shape and size. We felt that under 25 was an appropriate number to be focusing these grants, and so we divided those up between 1 in 10 employees and 11 in 25 employees. The proposal has the grant being used for applicants who need to fund to recover lost or diminish operational revenue from closing, cancel programs, or fundraising, as well as applicants who continue to provide mission-oriented programs and services and related services and equipment. The city council, when deciding on the parameters for the for-profit businesses, really opened those grants up to any business within the city of Issaquah within certain size parameters. And so we felt it was appropriate, looking at nonprofits, that that would largely follow the same line. There are certainly communities around America who have taken a different approach with this funding and have tried to be more targeted. The city council has already done that on a limited basis so far to those organizations, providing direct service, mostly food and shelter, earlier in the pandemic. So we're recommending this evening that this grant be available to any nonprofit, again, that can demonstrate the need for funding to recover loss or diminish revenues, or, and as long as they're continuing to provide programs. The grant cannot be used to pay debts, to close an organization, or start a new one. Again, we want to make sure that this is focused on those that are continuing to do business. The selection criteria would be similar to what we have done in previous grants, that we would first look to those that are qualified. They would be entered into a lottery and awarded to the extent of available funds. So depending on the number of applications we would have, we would go through those that met the criteria for eligibility and then award them in a lottery fashion. We also wanted to narrow down a little bit of organizations that would not be eligible, so this would not be open to every single type of 501(c)(3). And again, this is not an original idea. This is a language that we found in several other communities as they've done this program. This list is not meant to be inclusive or stand alone singularly in any way. It just seemed to make sense. Certainly, I think the council, when looking at this, needs to make sure that this meets the community standards here in Issaquah. But those would, organizations not eligible would be educational institutions of all sizes, hospital and outpatient treatment clinics, group homes, athletic leagues or teams, professional associations, retirement associations, alumni groups, research institutions, including medical research, fraternities and sororities, grant-making or endowment funds, media organizations, 501(c)(3) private non-operating foundations, parent-teacher groups, any nonprofit to support a single organization, nonprofits whose primary officer is a city Issaquah employee or an immediate family member. So again, happy to talk about this during the council's discussion, but this is a list of non-eligible organizations that other communities around America have used. So looking at eligibility criteria, ask that the organization be in existence for more than three years, have an IRS 501(c)(3) designation. Certainly, there are nonprofits that do not hold the (c)(3) designation but would have other attributes of a (c)(3), but we're recommending that they would have a valid IRS 501(c)(3) designation. Employ fewer than 25 people, have an operational budget less than $3 million, have primary business address in Issaquah or a bricks-and-mortar service location within Issaquah. In looking at the list of organizations that are registered in Issaquah, we noticed that there are several nonprofits that may not be registered for their primary business address in Issaquah but do have a bricks-and-mortar location. So if that would be the case, they would be eligible in this program. Be in good standing with the Washington Secretary of State. Occasionally, organizations fall out of standing for various reasons, usually for lack of filing appropriate tax returns, and so it would need to be in good standing with the state of Washington. Agencies would remain eligible for the grant even if the organization had received other COVID-related funding from the city of Issaquah. As mentioned earlier, certainly the council is aware that there have been organizations, 501(c)(3)'s, that have received funding, so we're proposing that they would remain eligible. Next, that agency services be funded are limited to services provided within Issaquah city limits. Again, language we saw in other communities in talking, certainly with one council member, Councilmember De Michelle, raised some questions about that. We'd be happy to talk further about that. The agency must be operational and able to operate with COVID-19 funds. The funds must not be used for inherently religious activities. Next page, Clerk Eggers. The agency must not require clients to participate in inherently religious activities or make faith proclamations, participate in programs, or receive services from these funds. No portions of these funds may be used for the fund of religious worship, religious instruction, or proselytization. The funds may be used to support nonreligious social services. Again, looking at many other communities around America, many religious organizations were funded, but in keeping with appropriate separations of certain states, this language is the language we're recommending, has been reviewed by City Attorney Jim Haney, and we feel comfortable that we cover that point. Next, that the agency must demonstrate financial impact or loss, either from loss of revenue and expansion of services related to COVID-19 equal to or in excess of the requested amount, and that applicant agencies certify by affidavit that they have not received funding from other sources to cover the same needs as being requested. Again, we're happy to make those organizations that we've already funded continue to be eligible for this program, but we cannot cover the same costs that have been previously covered by someone else through this process. So, Council President, members of the council, that is the program that we've outlined for you. Again, we'll be honest, that this is liberally sharing the good work of our sister cities around America, but we think this makes sense for what the council was thinking about, and certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, City Administrator. And council, if you have questions at this time, please indicate with the chat. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Hall. I accidentally wrote question in the wrong spot at first. Just real quick, about administration's decision not to include (c)(4)'s and (6)'s, could you explain, was the reason that, when you were searching, other communities weren't including those? Other communities were being targeted and specific to (c)(3)'s? Is that what you said?
Yes, Councilmember Hall, members of the council. That was certainly part of it. I think in reading other communities' discussions of this point, I think that some (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s, again, have other revenue opportunities, other revenue streams, even if they have been hurt by the pandemic, that those revenue streams existed. Certainly, I think the administration's happy to talk further about this. There are a very small number of (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s in the community, and the council may wish to consider, rather than a competitive program for them, you may wish to just have specific grants to those (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s. Not unlike what you've done earlier in the pandemic, where specific organizations were identified and funding was provided.
Thank you. And now we have a number of questions. So Councilmember Walsh is next.
Thank you. Now that the American Recovery Act, I think it's called, has been passed, and we know that we will be receiving at some point funds, total amount yet to be determined, all of that, have we considered looking at this in a more holistic, look at all of the needs in the community, and address those with a bigger pot of money, rather than, well, not necessarily rather than, but as a way to understand what our needs are and what our funding possibilities might be?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I think Mayor Polly put forward this proposal before we knew that there was going to be federal funding. So I think that, you know, the first answer to your question is that what we have before you tonight, we feel there's a certain sense of urgency to. With that said, the United States Senate has passed a version of the Recovery Act over the weekend. My understanding is the House of Representatives will have the bill again to consider over the next several days. What I'd like to do right now is share with you the language that is in the bill. The United States Conference of Mayors provided that language over the weekend, and I just need to quickly remind myself how to share. Oh, I don't know that I can share. Clerk Eggers, I, my share button is not illuminated. Is that something you can fix? Or perhaps I can just email it to you? What do you suggest?
Yeah, let's try passing the presenter icon to you, and if that doesn't work out, then we can.
I didn't realize I lost that ability with the WebEx upgrade, so let's see if I get it back. All right. It says I'm now a presenter, so let's see. See how easy it is for me to do this. Do you all see a document that says use of funds at the top?
We do. It's rather small. If you could increase your percentage at the bottom corner of your screen.
Also, a lot of typos.
Yeah, I did put a dash between non and entitlement. So what I did, the document was about 600 pages. The Conference of Mayors highlighted about 60 pages, and so I cut and paste from a PDF, so I apologize if you see some words there that are typoed. But as far as use of funds, it says that the funds should be, can be used by December 31, 2024, and then the requirements are to respond to a public health emergency with respect to the COVID-19 or negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, or A to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, and hospitality; B, to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers of the metropolitan city, nonentitlement unit of government. And what a nonentitlement unit of government is, is based on the Community Development Block Grant formula. There are communities that automatically receive a portion of funds through the CDBG program, and then the rest of the cities in America are known as nonentitlements. So we are a nonentitlement unit of local government. So again, to provide for eligible workers that are performing such essential work, or providing grants to eligible employers that have eligible workers who perform essential work. C, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such metropolitan city due to the COVID-19 public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the most recent full fiscal year of the city prior to the emergency. And then last, is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So that is what's in the bill. What is problemated as far as how this actually will work, I think we need to wait. Obviously, the bill has not been passed completely, it's not been signed by the president, but I knew, in speaking with many of you, that you were interested about the specifics, so I wanted to have those to share with you this evening. So Councilmember Walsh, I think that answers part of your question. Let me take this down.
I guess I would ask my other council members if people are, if we're interested in, once the bill is passed, scheduling some time to talk over the needs of the community and how we would want to allocate those funds to have that conversation, so that we don't continue to piecemeal out funds to the community. So that would be my question.
And if I can just add, I think Mayor Polly's feeling it's very important that we do do that. I think there are still a number of unknown pieces to this. I think the administration would like some time to be thoughtful. We have multiple years, we have until the end of 2024, to spend the money, and so there may be an opportunity to come up with a multi-year plan that would make sense. So, Council President, members of the council, you know, we're certainly, administration's certainly willing to do that. But again, let me emphasize, the reason we're here tonight is Mayor Polly's feeling that the nonprofit issue was important, was something that the council felt was important, and we believe we should move forward. Clearly, the money that we're expecting to get, which is somewhere between $7.5 and $8 million, assuming nothing else happens with the bill, and really, until we get a note from the state of Washington, when they have the cash in hand, I, you know, we don't want to spend too much of it, but I think that $100,000 at this point, we can expect to have at least a portion of the money that we would get from the federal government.
Thank you. Okay. Next question is from Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Council President. My question is, do we have an idea how many organizations would qualify? I saw email threads from one of my fellow council members that was trying to parse some of the criteria, and I'm wondering if the administration thinks that's the right list, or how it relates to, is there an idea of how many organizations would qualify to compare to the number of grants that are proposed this evening?
Thank you, Councilmember Marts, members of the council. We have looked, and I believe have provided the council, a list from the Internal Revenue Service website of those nonprofits that are, have a business address registered here. And I think that the initial thought that we had was that might be the universe, but upon further reflection, we realized that that's likely not true because of nonprofits that may operate regionally and either have a physical presence here, bricks and mortar, or provide services here in the community. So that initial list was, I think, 300-odd number, so certainly that number would be in excess of that. We do not have an exact figure or even an estimate. I mean, I would, I would say another 50 or 75, perhaps just as a approximate guess. So, you know, let's say that there's in the 400 range. But again, when you also then look at what we're proposing that would not be eligible, that also then takes that number down a bit. So we have not done any kind of cross-tabulations to come up with an idea more precisely. Again, we feel the $100,000 makes sense at this juncture.
Okay, but the number that I saw from one of my fellow council members was like, six organizations would meet the criteria.
I believe, Councilmember Marts, members of the council, that that was looking at the (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s. So we were, we were looking at the (c)(3)'s, and then there was a much larger number of (c)(3)'s, and then a smaller number of (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s. I know that.
I'm sorry, but it was referred to as 501(c)(3) analysis, and it refers to it as (c)(3). I'm now very confused. Throughout that analysis, maybe I could ask the fellow council member that did that analysis to speak to it, because it says (c)(3) everywhere.
Yes, this is, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilmember De Michelle. I think this question is for you.
Yes. Yes, this is Councilmember De Michelle. Yeah, I did go through kind of a scenario practice, just to see what I could find, but one thing I need to point out is that the criteria that's being suggested now by the administration is different than the criteria that I was using, so that would make quite a bit of difference. And also, I didn't have that larger list that City Administrator Bob Quitz is referring to. I just had the initial, I think I had 216 organizations that I was applying my criteria to. So that's going to make a difference in the outcome of what we have here.
Okay. Thank you. I still am a little in the dark in the sense that if we're proposing having 17 grants, you know, 17 grants out of 20 nonprofits would be a remarkable coverage. 17 grants out of 400 organizations would be pretty light coverage, and so I struggle a little bit to understand how what we're proposing compares to the potential target audience, but I'm not sure I'm going to get an answer to my question this evening. Thank you.
And, Council President, if I may, we have not done that cross-tabulation. I mean, if that's something that the council would like us to do, and go through at least a list of nonprofits that are registered here, eliminate those if you believe the categorization for elimination is appropriate. That's at least one further step than we have taken to this point. You know, the other, more wildcard is what other nonprofits are here that may not be registered here but provide service here, and that's, I think, a little bit harder to put a precise number on.
Thank you. Councilmember Marts, do you have any further questions?
Not questions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle, and my question is kind of following up on Councilmember Marts. Since we're really in uncharted territory here, we really don't know the numbers, we really don't know how this is going to play out, and I noticed that you, you know, you have a split in the proposal between, I'm trying to look here and find it here, you know, a proposal of possibly up to 11 grants for employees of 1 to 10, or businesses that have employees of 1 to 10, and then maybe six grants for employees that have 11 to 25. And I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could build in some flexibility into that split, so that, let's say we get 15 grant applications from the smaller group and only three from the larger group. It seems like we really don't know how that's going to play out at this point. And so maybe talk a little bit about how you come up with that split, and so we can understand that before we have a discussion.
Uh, Councilmember DeMichele, members of the council, uh, I, I think the sense was that there was an interest in funding smaller organizations over larger organizations. And I think it's, it became a matter of simple math, that with, with a limited amount, we took the same allocations, the 5,000 and 7,500, which we provided the business grants. And so it's the number that, that fit based on the hundred thousand dollars. I wish I could claim that this was a more finely crafted proposal, uh, but given the parameters, um, there are certain limitations. There are limitations by the sure amount of money you wish to spend. There are limitations by who's eligible. Uh, and so I think the administration's attempt this evening was not to present the perfect proposal, but at least one that had parameters that the council could speak to.
Um, do you, Councilmember DeMichele, do you have any follow-up questions to that?
Uh, not right now, thank you.
Okay. Um, Council Deputy President Ray.
Uh, thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. Uh, two questions somewhat related, but, but not, not wholly related. The first is, we talked about grants to nonprofits who are operating in Issaquah but aren't based in Issaquah. From a number of employees perspective, are we, we going to look at them from a aggregate or number in Issaquah? Or have we, have we even thought through kind of how we would uh, cipher out what their size categorization would be, could be, might be?
Uh, Deputy Council President, I think you raise a, an important issue. Um, I think it would be difficult for us to suss through that. Um, you know, the YWCA, if I'm correct, it has the facility in the Highlands. Uh, that is a regional nonprofit. I would imagine they exceed 25 staff members throughout their entire organization. So, uh, under this would not be eligible. And so either, that's, that's a good thing because it's a larger organization and this grant program is really geared towards smaller organizations, or it's a bad thing because they may very well have less than 25 employees that work in the community. So I think, you know, there are probably arguments for either, either way to go with that. Ultimately, I think it's the council's decision, who is this program for? Um, is it for everybody and we, we spread the peanut butter as, as well as we can? Or are we really focused on those that are smaller, those that are really only focused on Issaquah? I mean, I think that helps uh, narrow that down, but ultimately is a policy decision for this council.
That's um, an interesting, uh, kind of almost segue into part two of that, which is, you know, really having a clarity of why, why, the why behind this grant program. It was, you know, with the business grants, it was clear to me, and this is a bit of a editorial, but bear with me, it was really clear to me, we were trying to keep businesses that were likely to fail. So I just wanted to know if we can articulate um, the why behind this grant program, because I think that'll help us inform and reach a consensus on, on how best to move that forward. Uh, my second question um, is related to outreach. And because these uh, nonprofits um, tend not to have huge staffs who are watching what we're up to, is how are we planning to get out to this community and say this is an opportunity that you might want to pursue? Have you given that any noodling?
Uh, Deputy Council President, members of the council, yeah, we've given a little bit of noodling. We've been very lucky uh, with the outreach we've done uh, on the business grants. So for example, the, the latest round of business grants just closed, we had 136 applications. And so, um, you know, that's through social media, uh, mostly, that's through the city's newsletter. Uh, I think we would continue that. Certainly, we have staff members who work with various types of nonprofits in the community. And I think we would leverage those, um, you know, professional connections that our individual staff members have. I, I think people will find out about this very quickly. Um, I don't, I'm not worried that, that we could get the word out in a way that covers everyone who might be eligible. To at least consider it.
Thank you.
I have one question also. Um, so this is Council President Hunt, and uh, my question is around home-based, potential home-based nonprofits. Um, when we had the small business grants, um, the last round of small business grants, there was a category specifically for home-based businesses. And then um, in this nonprofit program, there's that same breakdown based on employees, but not that category for home-based um, businesses. And I wondered if they would qualify under this, and then also what additional considerations um, should we take into account regarding potential for home-based nonprofit?
Council President, is that a question or a statement? I'm sorry.
That's a question. So it's, it's around, you know, would a home-based nonprofit be eligible under these criteria? And then if so, why not separate them out in the same way that we did with the business program? Because the business, because as far as I can tell, everything else is basically modeled after the last round of business grants.
Uh, thank you. So Council President, members of the council, a couple of things. First of all, I think uh, the COVID crisis has, I think, forced some folks to work from home. Um, and so I would think if there are nonprofits that maybe had uh, an office somewhere, that they might be in a home, and I wouldn't want to discriminate against them. Um, I think the nonprofit organizations are different than businesses. They are, especially 501(c)(3), they have to have bylaws, they have to go through an incorporation process, they have to petition the IRS for their designation. So I think there's a little bit more substance generally to them um, than perhaps every single business that might be registered to do business in Issaquah. So I think there is that difference. So at this point, if it is a home-based nonprofit, I think that they would continue to be eligible. And I think that given how nonprofits are organized and what the process required to become a 501(c)(3) is sufficient to, uh, to recognize that that's, and they certify that they're ongoing and, and continue to operate, I think that's sufficient.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I am not seeing any other questions. Uh, so I'll just wait, I'll pause one minute in case anybody has a late-breaking question. Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Um, so we do have a public comment period at this point in the meeting. Um, Clerk Eggers, is anybody online and potentially wishing to speak?
I have two attendees. Um, if you'd like to raise your hand, if you'd like this opportunity to address the council. If you're unable to find that, you can send your host a quick message. Give you a moment to either raise your virtual hand or to send a quick message. Not seeing any activity.
Okay.
Um, and just would reiterate that if, if you'd like to address the council, your email, you can reach them at citycouncil@issaquahwa.com. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Clerk Eggers. Um, and at this time, I will also summarize emails. This is something that, that we have been doing while we're in the virtual meeting format. Um, and we didn't receive any emails specifically on this ID, um, on this informational item for this evening, but previously, uh, we did receive an email that I think is relevant. And that was urging consideration for our, including nonprofits in the small business grants, and specifically including C4s and C6s in those small business grants. And um, this email also explains the expenses that C4s and C6s have, and how those are similar to the same sort of expenses and same sort of challenges that some businesses have been experiencing with COVID-19. And that concludes the email summary. So at this time, we will move into council discussion, and I will open up the chat again. Okay. Um, so we do, uh, so I will open up for a council discussion. I see Councilmember Marts would like to start off the discussion.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, two things, when, um, I, I would like to see this come back, uh, see a bill brought forward, um, with the particulars as stated tonight. But I do want some supplemental information. Uh, one is, I do want to understand the potential pool of applicants uh, that would meet the criteria. I like the criteria, I appreciate the administration, uh, looking and seeing how other municipalities have done this. So what kinds of organizations would get sifted out by that, or get sifted in, I guess, uh, by that criteria? And the other thing is, this one's a little bit harder. I want to understand the need a little bit better. I think there's been some questions about, um, do we know that there is the kind of need there is in the business community? I think that we've heard loud and clearly from our business community. So if there's a way to understand whether C3s, the extent to which C3s are being impacted by COVID, I'm not sure I've heard that yet. And before I could uh, consider spending that money, I would want to make sure that we understood the problem that would be solved. And I realize that's fairly short notice, but um, and I don't know the exact way to answer that question, but it's, uh, it's my thoughts from the conversation this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to start off with, this is Councilmember DeMichele, sorry. I'd like to start off uh, looking at the question that uh, City Administrator Bob Kowitz referred to, the criteria that says, um, sorry, I'm looking for it here. It says, uh, agency services to be funded are limited to services provided within Issaquah city limits. And I, I want to acknowledge that I thoroughly understand the intent of that statement, but I also know the reality of um, social service agencies. And that sounds to me like a, first of all, a barrier to application, and secondly, a reporting nightmare for um, social service agencies. Because we're really in a regional, most of our social service agencies are in much more of a regional world. Um, uh, they, many of them have policies of not turning away anybody. And so that's, that's one problem. But the other is that uh, being located in Issaquah, they tend to draw people from, I don't know, from south, south of us, from east of us, west of us, north of us, who don't live within those city limits, but need those services. And so they cross over. And so I know that, for example, the Food and Clothing Bank has kind of struggled with this issue, how, who do they serve, where do they serve them? And there are some generally agreed guidelines that they've agreed to. I think other agencies have the same issue. Um, we live within a large school district, uh, and a lot of times when you're serving younger people, you're serving the whole district instead of just those people that live within the city limits. So I would, I would like to see something brought back. I'm, I'm thinking if we, if we talked about the Issaquah community or the greater Issaquah community, if that might be a more realistic thing for our nonprofits to deal with. First of all, from, uh, again, from an application standpoint, but also from a reporting standpoint back to us, I'm not sure that they would even be able to identify which one of their clients are within Issaquah city limits and which ones are just over the line of, you know, to the east or west or south of us. So um, I'm wondering if we could just do that a little bit bigger and give, give those nonprofits a little bit more flexibility and not use the word city limits there. And um, so, and I have other comments, but I think I'd just like to cede the floor to somebody else and come back later. Thank you.
Okay. Um, uh, Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. I have a, a couple of things that I would like to consider, including, one is, since we did not include um, the C4s or the C6s in the business grants, I would like to see them um, included in these grants here, as I think we do have 4s and 6s that, that are struggling. And though they, they have a different uh, business model, um, I think that it would make sense to do that. The other thing, when we were talking about our businesses and we went with the lottery, it was because we didn't have complete information and we really couldn't assess needs. And I'm, I would like us to give some thought to, for the not-for-profit, to really assessing the need instead of, um, you know, random lottery, because there probably are some that are truly in need and some that are, are less so. And then my final comment is a kind of a piggybacking on Councilmember DeMichele. And maybe it's not that you have to provide services solely within the city of Issaquah, but that you provide some level of service within the city of Issaquah. So that, um, you know, we're not getting people who are, who are simply providing services somewhere else and, and applying for these grants. So I think there's some ways to get around that. So those are my, my initial things I would like to see considered.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Councilmember Hall, and uh, everyone, please bear with me, I have a bunch of uh, broken, unstructured thoughts I'm just going to work through on the dais. Um, I think, uh, Councilmember DeMichele brought up a really good point about um, the service delivery aspect of this. I think it gets to the question of, you know, what is the problem that we're trying to solve here? That could either be, one, we're trying to support Issaquah residents, or two, we're trying to support nonprofits themselves. Um, I would argue it's probably a little bit of both. Um, so I think getting some more information about that would be helpful, but um, I guess the way I'm thinking about it is it's more in line with, we're trying to, you know, support the actual nonprofit organization, just like we work businesses. Um, I liked the question that was brought up about, you know, really, who's this program for, small organizations, large organizations? I think the hundred thousand dollar pot is a good one. If our uh, goal is to um, support smaller organizations now that are really struggling. Um, and then moving into my next point, um, really being able, after we have a better idea what the federal landscape is in terms of how much money we're getting, um, then being able to think big picture about how we can help the community, um, and support the community across all perspectives. And I think that was um, Councilmember Walsh's point, and I thought that was a really good one, too. Um, and then, um, I also would like to see supports for 501(c)(4) and (6) organizations, but I think it's possible for us to target supports um, to organizations that do community building and economic development work within the borders, within Issaquah. Um, I don't think it's a good idea to um, just put them in the drawing along 501(c)(3). I've had a couple of conversations with people in the C4, C6 world, and they hate having to go up against C3s because they're direct service providers, and you don't want to take money away from direct service providers. They're, they're, they're doing, they're fulfilling a really important need right now during the pandemic. Um, so I think it might be worth exploring, I think a hundred thousand dollars is still a good amount for right now, but I think it might be worth exploring, including a third bracket for targeted C4s and 6s, if that's possible. I'm not sure. I would be open to other people's suggestions. Um, did I have anything else? I don't think so, although if I do, I'll get back in line. But those are my comments right now. Thanks.
Councilmember Walsh.
Thanks. This is Councilmember Walsh. Um, I'll just jump on and say I appreciate the comments and questions that have been asked previously, and I look forward to those answers, and also throw my hat into the interest on the 501(c)(4) and (6) either in with this group or as a separate opportunity. I think both could solve the problems. I think as far as what is the why and what is the need, we've heard from the 501(c)(4) and (6) that there's a need. I'm not sure we've necessarily heard on the C3s. And so that's one reason why um, I'm most interested in that one portion, because I think the need has been clearly expressed. So, thanks.
Um, I'm going to make my comments, and then I'll loop back around to other council members if you want to um, go around and have round two. So um, my comments are, first of all, I am very much interested in having the larger conversation about addressing all of the needs. I think we're not yet at um, a place information-wise where we can really have that conversation. But absolutely, to Councilmember Walsh's earlier question, I think that's a super important conversation for us to have. I think we're not yet at a place, information-wise, where we can really have that conversation. But absolutely, to Councilmember Walsh's earlier question, I think that's a super important conversation for us to have as soon as possible. And I think that a holistic approach will, will be really beneficial and will help us better serve the community. That said, I think $100,000 for nonprofits, we've, we've had several rounds of the small business grants, and I think having small, having the nonprofit grants at $100,000 will, in a way, also allow us to assess the need, because we'll see how many grant applications. In the first rounds of the business grant applications, we got a sense of the need, I think, because we saw how many applications and, and what expenses they had. And then that was kind of an anchor point for the subsequent rounds of small business fundings that we did allocate. So I think that this at least gets us started, getting that information that we can start acting on. Because I, I think we don't have a lot of information at this time, and this was, also came up from several other councilmembers wanting more information. But, you know, this is one way that we will, I think, get some information. And I, I also think that the need is there, just based on conversations with, with individuals in the community, and the fact that COVID-19 has affected every aspect of life. And then, I think there's some work to be done on the definitions in the bill. I think, for instance, employee, we need to have a clear definition of if that's salaried full-time employee, for example, because that does matter in terms of the qualifications. So I would like to see more clarity around that. The question around whether the employee is in Issaquah, but the larger organization is outside of Issaquah is interesting. And I think we would, that would, that's another area where it'd be good to have more definition on employee. And then, yeah, lastly, in a number of the comments that were made, there was the question of why, why are we supporting this? And in my mind, I think it's because we have been trying to address needs associated with COVID-19. We've seen that the small business community has really appreciated that we've been able to support them with grants. And I think that, I think that nonprofits have, in many cases, similar expenses. And so for those that do have similar expenses, I think we, we should support them. And that's why I'm generally supportive of the program at this time, and would just like more information. And that's my comments at this point. So I will go back to Councilmember DeMichele for round two.
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele. I'm going to echo many of your comments, Council President Hunt. I am very supportive of this and would, yes, like to have it brought back to the council. I think it's really important that we recognize that nonprofit businesses are, and not always, but in many cases, business entities that provide jobs and pay rent and utilities and buy and distribute supplies, and all of the other things that businesses do. And these grants are really aimed at the business part of nonprofit businesses. So in that case, I think we're, we're doing a really important thing in recognizing that aspect of the nonprofit world. Nonprofits contribute to the economic well-being of the city by keeping people fed and clothed and in their homes and in their schools, and keeping the lights and heat on, and addressing mental health issues before they become crises, and many other kinds of human services. And these are all actions that lead to a stable community and a stable economy, and that allow people to continue to be customers who buy products and services from, from for-profit businesses. And so for me, that is the rationale for what we are doing, is the for-profit business world and the nonprofit business world need each other. They, they go together, and they both support the economy of this community. So I think we're taking a very important step in recognizing that. I think that I would come down in favor of including 501(c)(4s) and (6s) in a separate grant program, possibly a set amount for each 501(c)(4) or 501(c)(6) in our community that we want to identify. Rather than opening it up for applications, just name those community organizations that we want to support that fall into that category and provide grants. And if we were to do that, I would like to see the amount that we're talking about double to $200,000, and make room for those additional 501(c)(4s) and (6s. So that would be how I would like to see that handled. I think this, I really appreciate all the work that's been put into this by the administration, and I think we're on the path toward a good ordinance. It's not quite there. I agree with Council President Hunt. We need a few more definitions around some of the words that have been used, but I think we're on our, our way to a good decision here. Thank you.
Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. A couple of things to pile on. One is, the 501(c) is a tax designation, it's not a business model. And to Councilmember DeMichele's point, these are, these are businesses that have operational needs, similar to the businesses that we supported through the business grants. I think that we need to spend some time before we talk about expanding the size of the grant to understand the need. We don't have a great deal of data to tell us the size of the need. So I agree with Council President Hunt, that we will, through this grant application process, have a better sense of what the need is. And then if we have a significant unmet need, we can have that further discussion. I think, though, to put a, kind of wrap this around, we have done a number of grants for various supports for the community over the last several months. And this is, in my mind, different. This is not about providing money to the not-for-profit community to develop or to deliver services. This is about providing money to the not-for-profit community so that they can continue to operate. And that's why I'm a little bit more flexible on the geography of where the services are delivered, because if the not-for-profit is operating here, then that is a, that is a business that we should support, just as we are supporting the for-profit business community. That's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So I agree with the comments about needing to better understand than need. We did hear a lot from businesses, and I know we've had a couple of comments from the (c)(3s. I'm trying to, I'm trying to recall what we have heard about, about the not-for-profits. I know there was a mention by the city administrator, there was a certain sense of urgency, and I'm not sure that I agree that I've heard that. It doesn't mean that there isn't a need. I just don't quite understand, what is it? Are we, do we have some agencies that aren't able to provide services because they're losing operating money, so they don't have people to provide those services? Or is there not enough money to provide services? The things I'm hearing in the community are, the not-for-profits are receiving a lot of support because there's a lot of concern about them during the pandemic. I don't know how true that is. I'm wondering, too, if there's a, a way to create some kind of a grant program that's not so much driven by labels, 501(c)(3), (c)(4), (c)(6. But what if it was a, a community fund where they, you know, you can apply for grants? And we want, I think the, you know, the bigger concern for these types of agencies, not-for-profits, are that we're getting the, the services out there, and they're not being cut off, as Councilmember DeMichele talked about. You know, they provide a lot of good services. So what is the need? How can we help? And is this approach the right, the right one by just delineating 501(c)(3), (c)(4s) and (c)(6s? I'm not, I'm not sure about that. So I'd be interested more about the need. I'd be interested if there's another way of doing it. I'm also interested in the opportunity that the not-for-profits have to do some fundraising along the same lines of what I've heard, where they ask for, where I've heard, asking, a not-for-profit asking for money, and people are being very generous, and companies are being very generous. $5,000 isn't a lot, and I guess that's a double-edged comment there, because if, you know, $5,000 is not a lot, it could probably be easily generated a fundraising campaign. But at the same time, it's also not a lot for a not-for-profit if it's really that desperate. For the question about having a conversation about the federal relief, I'm not so much interested in starting off our conversation with a council conversation. I'm interested, I'm interested in what the community thinks we should do. We've done a lot of talking ourselves over the past year about, about how to deal with the emergencies during the pandemic. And I, you know, I think as a group and as a city, we've been very thoughtful. But when we start getting that kind of money, and we start thinking about what to do with it, especially in terms of the pandemic, I'd like to know what the community, what the community thinks. So I think that's a very important conversation to have. It's an external-facing conversation, not an internal one. Thank you.
Thank you. I am not seeing, oh, sorry, Councilmember Hall.
Thanks, Council President. This is Councilmember Hall. And I was, I was actually going to say something very similar to what Councilmember Goodman just finished on. And I guess first, just directed at the community, too, if you're watching this and if you have any feedback, we would certainly love your feedback via email, on what you think we should be doing to support nonprofits or any organization in the community right now. And then I was also going to say, perhaps we could include something, you know, as we get closer to having that larger, broader conversation, we could include something in an e-newsletter that goes out to the community, like, we would like your feedback on how to use these funds. And I don't know, maybe that's something we could discuss in the future. But I completely agree with Councilmember Goodman, that we should be leading from the community up in this conversation. So that was my comment. Thanks.
Okay. Now I'm not seeing any other councilmembers at this time. So I, I have some notes here, and I'll summarize them. I'll try to group them together. So if you hear something that you think is not reflective of our conversation, or, or you think misrepresented the conversation, then please comment afterwards, and I, and we can make some corrections. So council definitely wanted more information, to the extent possible, on the needs of nonprofits and on the applicant pool. There was some concern about the limitation, the geographic limitation on services being provided. And I think generally, people were more thinking of this as a way to support nonprofits that employ people in Issaquah, rather than nonprofits that specifically only serve people in Issaquah. And so I think taking another look at that geographic restriction would address that concern potentially. There were several, several councilmembers interested in the (c)(4) and (c)(6s) being either included or being addressed in a subsequent or separate program. But there was interest in supporting them and assessing the needs and supporting them. And then, generally, I heard support for the $100,000 amount. One councilmember did suggest a larger amount if there was more, but I think generally, generally, I heard consensus being that, that the amount for this time was, was correct, or that we were in agreement that this was reasonable. And then, lastly, well, and then all, there was also some concern, some interest in sort of assessing need as the basis of the grants, rather than the label, the (c)(4) and (c)(6s, which I think ties into that. And then, lastly, there was a lot of conversation about the federal stimulus funding and taking a holistic approach for that, and then also making sure that we include the community in those conversations from the very beginning, and taking a holistic look across the community for that federal stimulus, and starting those conversations off when we can. So that's my summary of our discussion. If any councilmember, any councilmember has any thing that you think I misrepresented or left out, please let me know. Okay. I'm not seeing anything. City Administrator Bob Kowitz, well, we have a question from Councilmember Hall, and then I'll check in with City Administrator Bob Kowitz, if you, if you have what you need from the council. Okay. Councilmember Hall, question.
Thanks. This is Councilmember Hall. I think I was going to ask a, a similar question to you, because I think this was supposed to come back next Monday, on the 15th. And it's, we seem to have a lot of things that we would like questions on, so I was still wondering, I was just wondering if that's even possible to come back in a week. So I'll defer to you, Council President Hunt, to start that conversation off.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, we, we will have some scheduling discussions, I'm sure, at, at leadership. City Administrator Bob Kowitz, did, you have a question as well? You're on mute.
Can you hear me now? Thank you. Sorry about that. I have some further questions, Council President, for the group. If I could take a couple of minutes and, and go through some of those. As far as the pool of potential applicants that was, that was requested, is it the council's desire to see a list? So we would take the list of the nonprofits that are registered here, apply it to the criteria that we have currently proposed, basically strike out those that we felt were ineligible, and then come back with a list? Or are we just looking at an aggregate number? So it was 300, and now it's 150? I'm just concerned, what, what will be success there?
Councilmember Marts would like to answer this question.
Yes, I would like a list. I suspect that when you apply all those criteria, the resulting number of 501(c)(3s) will be a fairly small number. So I, I, success for me would just, would, would be a list of those organizations that meet the criteria. Thank you.
All right. So Council President, I'm seeing some nods, and so perhaps that's just the best way. If anyone objects, that's what we'll, we'll do then. The next question is regarding how to solicit need. It would be very easy for the staff to put in the newsletter, if you're a 501(c)(3), send an email to such an address. I'm always hesitant to do something like that. Is that the kind of feedback you're looking for? We could certainly have it sent not to the city council address, but are you looking for us to do some survey work? What's, how would you like us to try to assess the need?
Okay. Councilmember Hall.
Thanks. This is Councilmember Hall. Two things come to mind, I guess. One thing that could be done is to try and contact, like, the state nonprofit association that has close contacts with nonprofits all across the state. I don't know how many organizations like those exist, but it might be a good idea to try and get an idea on the need from organizations like that. I also just wanted to say, with regard to the last question, I personally, just because I didn't hear anyone say anything, I personally don't need a list. But if the majority of council would like a list, I understand. So if anyone else had any other thoughts on that one, now would probably be a good time to share that. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. We have a few other people that would like to comment. So Council, Council Deputy President Ray.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. This is Chris Ray. As for need, I think we, we feel As for need, I think we field the grant applications, we look at the number of grants we receive, and we use that in a similar fashion as we use the business grants to establish the need. So I think that that is going to be a self-defining thing in my, in my mind, if we take, we move forward. I'm either, just to circle back question number one, I am okay either way, either with a list or an aggregate number. A list might be more informative, though. But in terms of assessing the need, I say let's go forward with a grant program, let's evaluate the responses, and based on that, we will have some good insights into what we need to do next.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. I think that possibly the, my comment was covered. I will just say that there is an alliance of eastside agencies, which represents all of the nonprofits on the east side, a whole range of them. The director, one of the presidents of that group is associated with Eastside Baby Corner, which is right here in Issaquah. And I think that she would probably be able to talk to some of the need that they've seen, so I would recommend, recommend getting in touch with them. And then I, personally, I was thinking I would reach out to some of the nonprofits I know and just ask if they wanted to come and comment at the, at the next meeting. I think I kind of agree with Councilman, Deputy Council President Ray's comment in that we've changed the criteria to the point where we've got quite an open field, and maybe the need will show up in those people who come and apply. And so I kind of think that that's the process we're looking at now, since we've widened the criteria to organizations who may not, may not have their address in Issaquah. So that pretty much opens the field to a lot of other possibilities. So those are just two suggestions I have, and I, having gone through that process myself, that's a lot of work, to go through that long list and kind of decide who belongs, who doesn't belong, based on a set of criteria. That was several hours of work, and I don't know that we want to have staff put their time into that, when the, it may turn out to be very different when we actually see the applications. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
Thanks, this is Councilmember Walsh. In assessing need, I think I would feel comfortable if the administration was to talk to three or four of the 501(c)(3)'s in the area that we know and understand what their funding situation is, how much their revenue has decreased over this period, if they're willing to share that type of information to give us a sense of need. We've obviously seen the demand for services decrease, but what we're trying to understand is the revenue side, whether there has been a significant decrease on that side. So getting a small subsegment of information from them would satisfy that for me. Thanks.
Okay, we have a comment from Councilmember Remarts. Oh, sorry, sorry, Councilmember Goodman, like, Councilmember Remarts.
That's okay, never mind, thanks.
All right then. Thank you, Council President. So I think both Councilmember De Michelle's idea of the person who heads up the local, forgive me, council of nonprofits, or I don't remember the exact title, and as well as the administration soliciting some possible feedback from some (c)(3)'s in the area, and if they don't choose to provide feedback, then they're providing a certain kind of feedback. And the other thing is, this whole, this question about getting a list, you know, I'm just one of seven, but I don't know much about the (c)(3) economy. I don't know who meets the criteria and who doesn't, so I would very much, I realize it's some work, but it's really important to me to see a list of who would meet the criteria, to understand, to understand where our monies would be potentially going. I just don't, you know, all I, I am but a humble rocket scientist, and I only understand rocket science and not the nonprofit economy. So, thanks.
Thank you. So I'll offer my thoughts on this as well, this is Council President Hunt. On the question of how to establish need, I was thinking more along the lines of asking, maybe, because this is based on programs that were developed in neighboring cities, I was thinking maybe ask neighboring cities what kind of demands they've had for their programs, and we could get a sense that way, since I am also thinking of the application process itself as giving us valuable information. Those neighboring cities will have had that application process already implemented, so that might be one way to get that kind of information that I think would be helpful, if that would be shareable. And then as far as the list of organizations that meet the criteria, I think that if you go through the process of figuring out how many meet the criteria, you would, in that process, be creating the list, and the list would provide us with more information. So I would, I would lean towards that and having that information for council.
So Council President, I have a couple other questions, and I appreciate the feedback. I think that there is a little chicken and egg issue with the organizations and what the criteria is. I think what we'll do is our best to identify the organizations that we think are out there, you know, perhaps just cross out the ones that we think aren't. So if the council sees the list and has a change of thought on the criteria, then you have some flexibility to do that. So we'll, we'll do our best to try to provide all that information. The next question I have is about this greater Issaquah community. I appreciate where Councilmember De Michelle is going with this. I think one concern that I have is, as I've mentioned, we've looked at other communities who have put together programs like this, but I was not able really to find any neighboring communities. These are, the communities I found were communities in other parts of the country. And so one of the challenges that we'll have with neighboring communities is that we are also then potentially supporting residents from surrounding areas that don't have programs. The City of Sammamish, to my knowledge, doesn't have a program for 501(c)(3)'s, Marjorie King County. So I just want to, we can leave it, Issaquah area, with the recognition that perhaps there are then residents that will benefit from other communities who have decided not to put resources toward supporting 501(c)(3). So if that makes sense, I guess I just wanted to raise that as a potential issue, because again, as far as I know, King County has not done this, City of Sammamish has not done this, Renton, Bellevue. You know, some, some other communities on the east side have partnered with community foundations, I think, and have done this, but no government that I'm aware of in the area has taken the lead on this. So I just wanted, again, seeing nods, Council President, I don't know if anyone has any comments specific to that, but just wanted to raise that as a question, as a potential issue.
Yes, we do have a comment. Council Deputy President Ray would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Council President, this is Chris Ray. I'm using an analog that goes back to the business grants, and, you know, we were supporting businesses because they were businesses in Issaquah, not to where their customers came from. And since this is an operational grant program, I think we support not-for-profits that are based in Issaquah, who, employees work in Issaquah, and then they provide some level of service within Issaquah. But because this is an operational-focused grant, not a services-focused grant, I think it's less important, because this isn't money that's going to provide services to people who don't live in town. This is going, this is money going to support not-for-profits who are in town and may support, provide services either locally or regionally. So I kind of, kind of looking through it with a different lens than, you know, kind of some of our historic support grants. So for rental assistance, you know, very, very strongly think that that needed to be focused on people who live in town. This one, I think it's a little bit different model. So that's, that's my take, and why I think this is okay to think of this a little more broadly.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh here. Excuse me. Yeah, I want to plus one what Deputy Council President Ray just said. I think I started to hear some stuff from City Administrator Bob Quitz saying, "We're broadening this out, and potentially you could get King County or Renton nonprofits applying for this." That wasn't my intention. So maybe I need some clarification there, but what, what I saw this as was Issaquah nonprofits, whether they are serving just Issaquah residents, or maybe might have some in the Issaquah School District that cross a border, I'm comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with the idea of a King County Renton nonprofit being in that group.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Council President, a couple of other questions, if I may?
Please go ahead.
The 501(c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s. So it seems as if there's interest among the council to include them. I'm unclear if we're including them in the $100,000, if you would like an additional increment of money allocated, or should we come back with a proposal with funding just for specific-named organizations that are (c)(4)'s or (c)(6)'s? If I could get some additional feedback on that, that'd be appreciated.
Thanks. This is Council President Hunt. I think that from the summary of the previous conversation, I got the impression that the consensus was that we wanted to support (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s in a different way than this, this program. So that was what I noted from our previous conversation. I do see that several other people want to comment on this. So Councilmember De Michelle, go ahead.
Yes, Councilmember De Michelle, that's exactly what I was thinking as well. And when I said that I'd like to see the pool expanded, that was under the circumstances of setting up a separate, I think it should be a separate program for the 501(c)(4)'s and 501(c)(6)'s, and then we would allocate additional funds beyond $100,000 to that program. So, and I, and I think it'd be great if, if there's time, if we could bring both of those back at the same time, if we could see those, a 501(c)(3) grant program and a 501(c)(4) and (6) program, side by side, $100,000 for the 501(c)(3) and some amount more for the 501(c)(4)'s and (6)'s. That's a mouthful. So, does that make sense, City Administrator Bob Quitz?
It certainly does, and if that's the will of the council, to see two programs side by side at the same time, and, you know, in discussions with Mayor Polly, we'll identify what makes sense as far as dollar amounts, so. And the hope is still this is coming back next week.
This is Council President Hunt. I was going to ask council, because that is a pretty quick turnaround, I imagine. So would, per scheduling purposes, would council be then amenable to pushing this out to the subsequent regular meeting, or not? Okay, so we, I'm seeing some nods. So I think that council is generally okay with having the combined, both the program with all of the considerations that we talked about this evening for the (c)(3)'s, and then we would also like to see at the same time a program addressing (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s, and potentially that would be at a later, the next regular meeting after the 15th. There needs to be that additional time.
All right. Thank you, Council President, members of the council. So I think we'll take you up on that offer. April 5th would be the next regular meeting after that. I think I've answered all the questions I have. I appreciate the council spending the time this evening to go through that. We'll come back with a revised program, and then we'll consult with Mayor Polly on her wishes for a proposal for the (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Did I miss any, Councilmember Hall? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, I just snuck in at the end. This is Councilmember Hall. I just wanted to add one more piece of direction for (c)(4)'s and (6)'s, and I don't think it's in the community's best interest to allow all of the (c)(4)'s and (6)'s in town to be eligible for grant funding. So I really have no idea what the next step looks like in that, if we just call out names or if we say (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s that engaged in economic development, economic supports, and community support during the COVID-19 pandemic. I don't know. So I guess this is a question for the city administrator in terms of what do you need from us right now to have what you need for you and the mayor to come up with a support structure for (c)(4)'s and (6)'s?
And if I may, Council President, members of the council, you know, we have heard from a handful of (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s, two or three, that provide economic development work. You know, I think we're going to need to go, I think it would just be easier to address that head-on, rather than come up with a program which we all know would only be eligible for a handful of organizations. You know, I think one of the things we need to look at is, you know, other support that those groups receive. You know, trying to do this as apples-to-apples as we can certainly is difficult, and I think it's borne out by my inability of finding any other program that focused on (4)'s and (6)'s, because I think that there are different issues with that. You know, some (c)(4)'s and (c)(6)'s already receive funds from municipal governments for their operation, which (c)(3)'s generally don't. And so, you know, I'll have to talk further with the mayor. My sense would be just to say, here are the organizations that I think are qualified of what you're saying, and then it's just coming up with a dollar amount and deciding is that dollar amount reasonable, given other support that the city already provides perhaps some of these organizations. And maybe it would make sense to, you know, delineate the support that these other organizations get, just to provide a level field of consideration for the council as it deliberate. So we'll do our best to do that on the 5th of April, and we'll let the council, you know, decide what they think's appropriate.
Okay, Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, this is Councilmember Walsh. I just wanted to sneak in here real quick at the end and thank the administration for bringing this to us with a question and a conversation, rather than bringing an A/B and having us pick it apart. I think this is the process that we would like to see going forward, or at least I would like to see going forward, because it gives us an opportunity to really ask the questions and have the conversation at this point. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Okay, great. I am not seeing any other council members wishing to comment. I'll just wait in case there's any late-breaking comments. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Okay, so City Administrator Bob Quitz, do you have what you need now from council?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so then I, we do not have a good-of-the-order notice, because this is a special meeting. So I will, at this time, there being no further business, I will adjourn the meeting. But please stay on, because we will have a special, special executive session, executive session rather, so please stay on the line, council members. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President.